Good evening viewers of Voice of Canada, our weekly talk show which we air every Saturday at 8pm. We have a very, very dynamic guest, a councillor from Markham who is a very well-known personality as a public service leader. And she's doing a lot of good work, not only in Markham, but she's doing a great work for Ontario in service of Canada. And my co-host today is my one and only Kamni Singh.
Hello.
So we welcome our councillor Isa Lee.
Thank you so much.
Please briefly explain with your name and little bit about yourself.
First of all, thank you so much Asbi.
Pleasure.
Yeah, and also Kamni for hosting the show, giving me the opportunity. Hello everyone, my name is Isa Lee, I'm representing Ward 8, City of Markham as the councillor. Basically, I got elected since 2018 and then got re-elected again this term. So yeah, I really love to thank my supporters, all the volunteers, especially my family for all your votes and supports. That definitely what warms my heart. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you and very warm welcome to you in the studio on the set of Voice of Canada. So as a co-host, now you have, the viewers know about you briefly. Now I'll go to the next question. So Isa, I came to know about, like when we were going through your bio, I saw, or we saw rather, that you have fairly good experience of being an anchor for a TV channel from Markham. And also you are well versed in journalism and media. So maybe you want to share your experience with media with our viewers?
Well, actually, I, yeah, I was in the media industry since 2007 as, at Fairchild TV as a news anchor and also a reporter. I also do write news. Basically, in my reporting role, I just go, I just went to different occasions assigned by the editor. And then wow, every time we got the chance to interview a variety of people. I, I have been doing, I, I did the one-on-one interviews with the then, then Prime Minister Stephen Harper.
Oh, my great friend. I got lots of pictures with Prime Minister Stephen Harper. I did outreach for him.
Oh, really?
Yes.
He was really.
I was a director outreach for the Conservative Party of Canada.
Oh, wow, now I know. Oh, now I know. Yeah, I'm so.
I didn't want it to open the book.
But I'm honoured to be here and talking with you, like chatting with you all like this. Well, yeah, so I, I actually feel really, well, I learned a lot through all the, like the interviews and all the assignments.
Great knowledge.
Yes, really, really. I, that actually broadened my, well, opened my eyes a lot wider throughout the community. And that's what actually started my kind of like a little thought of running in politics. In the past, basically I studied political science and UFT, but I never ever thought of running in politics back then. After I studied, I was like, because my, myself, my personality is kind of like more a community-based person. And since my childhood, I started to volunteer a lot in my own community back in Hong Kong. So even after I moved in Canada, I used to volunteer in, not just my school, I also started a volunteer association back then.
Very good, very good.
Yeah, co-organised with some other friends and senior, well classmates at UFT, which actually called a volunteering association. We, we help a lot of students, not just from the university, but also giving some high school students opportunities to get their hours. So during that course, I really learned a lot, like from outreach into different like service agencies, senior homes and stuff. So that actually it's kind of my, 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 my passion and my passion on through volunteer. So after I graduated, I started to, well, work in the media industry. I first, before Fairchild, I was actually in Toronto Chinese radio.
Beautiful.
Yeah, to start my.
See, you're a media person. I could, I could feel when I met you, I said, no, this person has got a spark in her. She's great.
Well, yeah, I really loved the job, like being broadcasting the news, reporting things out, which is, which was the truth, right? But well, actually after a few, a few years, I was like, I have been doing something like one-way communication. The, the more that I outreach to people, the more that I heard.
Definitely.
And it really was a challenge for me to, well, every time when I went out to people and they were like, oh, reflect a lot of issues. And I was like, oh, okay, now I know. And I reported out, how could I better, like how, how could I reflect the idea to the government? Or to somebody who actually handles all these issues, right? So yeah, that, that actually, it actually has a click on me. And until certain point that it was my husband who actually encouraged me saying that, well, yeah, since you're.
That's a good news, that your spouse is so supporting.
Yes, yes, this is actually really, really a great support and.
That's why I always tease Amanda that Chris is so good. Because Chris knows me well. So I always tease her.
Yeah, next time I should bring my husband in too.
Definitely, definitely. We would love to meet him or maybe we'll be meeting him during the now January Chinese New Year. We are coming. Kamni always comes, she's also regular and mayor will kill me if I don't attend his annual dinner after two years break.
Oh, yes, yes. Well, we would love to, yeah. But yeah, that, that, that's basically about it. And until that point, I started to think about, well, probably we can just run for politics instead of working for like a social service sector. And you, you actually, we would like to, everyone of us would like to contribute.
Definitely.
How much and how effectively.
And how you can do.
Exactly. And how the message can go out and how far it can, can reach out to the government and to make things better. So yeah, this is pretty much it. And of course, in 2014, I actually ran, oh, I didn't, I didn't say about it. But I ran like the first time, I got lost by 136 votes.
Oh, so sad.
Yeah, to the incumbent.
I saw you ran, first attempt you did in 14, then you, you won in 18.
Yes.
And just now though it was a landslide victory.
Oh.
You won with a good margin.
Well, yeah, one, one side of the way, yeah.
She won with a good margin and I was, yeah.
Yes.
Now you're a seasoned councillor. Let me tell you, you are a seasoned councillor and this year the new council faces are very, very bright and energetic.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I was talking to them and they said, yes, because Alan Ho also knows me well.
Yep, 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 yep.
Then Jim Jones.
Ah, yes.
Regional councillor.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're a friend of Markham council.
No, definitely. Because Jim, Jim and myself, we have judged few beauty pageants.
Oh, Jim Jones, yes.
Jim. And that day I was looking for Jim Jones at the reception of, he was, I couldn't find him. I wanted to say hello, but then Amanda said, I've also not seen him. I think he has not been or today come to the reception.
We just missed him. Yes, yes.
Councillor Isa, inform of, further inform over viewers, when did you migrate to Canada at what age? Because I think your university education was here in Canada.
Yes.
With University of Toronto.
Yes.
Said what age you came, which year you came from Hong Kong.
I came since 2000 for, for high school studies and then, and then went to UFT. So yeah, it's, it's pretty much, I would say a journey because I went, I, I came here by myself.
Wow.
I, I was a Canadian, I'm actually a Canadian citizen since, since born.
Yeah, lots of Hong Kong people are Canadian citizens, like we kept also the Canadian citizenship.
Yes, because my dad was studying and also living here.
Lovely, lovely.
During his university years, he was in Manitoba, but then after he studied, graduated, he went back to Hong Kong. So we, myself and my younger brother actually automatically became citizen, but we never came to Canada till, yeah, 2000. Yeah, one time I was here, well, just visiting relatives with my mom and with my family. And that time, actually it was 2000, a summer.
So you're more a Canadian now. 22 years you are a Canadian, more than 22 years you are like me. I'm, mine is 25th year as a Canadian citizen.
Wow.
Proud Canadian.
Milestone, milestone. Oh, wow. Well, yes, yes.
So we are all proud Canadians. So it's really a pleasure to talk to you so freely and happily knowing, okay, at the same time. No, we, I'm going to, that is mine because I added it. So councillor Isa Lee, as you have got such a hectic life. I asked mostly all the politicians, how do you manage your public life, your councillor duties, a good spouse, to your, as good wife to your spouse, managing two kids? Am I right? You have got two kids?
Yes, yes.
And managing the house also.
Well, I, I should put it this way, without the support of family, nothing can happen.
Nothing can happen.
I, I'm actually really, really fortunate and grateful enough to have my beloved husband, who is also my campaign manager.
Oh, wow.
Three times.
Lucky guy.
Well, I, I'm lucky. He, he might not be. Yeah, he has been really, really dedicated. And yeah, that's all because of him. He's, he's actually been encouraging me to run in politics. And he has the strategy that helped me through me and.
He's a good planner.
He is. He certainly is. Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Yeah, he definitely is. Yeah, everybody knows me, basically knows him too. Because he, everyone knows he is the man behind the scene, the theme. So.
And are you a good chef also? You cook well?
No, unfortunately, just too busy to handle that.
So one, one, one step, Amanda is one step ahead of you. She cooks very well.
Yes, she is a good chef.
She's a, she's a real chef.
Yes, yes, yes. I definitely have learned. Well, we have a good mom, good, good, good mom and good in-laws.
So see, we asking you all very, very intimate questions also. So people will know you well.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, what is Isa, Isa Lee made of?
Yeah, one weakness, not a good cooker.
No, it's not weakness.
Not a good chef.
See, you are doing very well. You are a successful woman in life. That is the biggest thing.
Ah, wow, yeah.
Plus known, well-known. At the reception also, it was hard to catch you.
Ah, wow.
Yeah, okay. So Isa, moving to the next one, the next question. So again, this is coming from your bio we read about you. So basically to say, you have been on so many committees for wellbeing of people of Markham in so many fields. So maybe you want to talk about the different committees and how you are involved, like maybe one by one, you want to mention that to the view.
Basically, since I got elected, I was, I sat on the race relations committee, also the accessibility advisory committee. And also the mayor's youth council, which, yeah, I was also co, well, sitting with the former councillor Ousmane too. And the next one is the CPAC, the cyclists and pedestrians Advisory Committee, which is also really, a really big committee in, in City of Markham. Which, yeah, they think, we, we got quite a few of like dedicated citizen members in all the committees. And so I, I really, well, since last term, I was also learning, right?
That's what I say, okay, this time you, we call you a seasoned councillor.
Well, yeah, still a lot to learn because there are so many community, I mean committees out there. So this time, well, and actually before I got elected, I was part of the library board too, the Markham Library Board. Yeah, because I, I love reading and I love community services. So this is something that I really, I'm really into. So I am really thankful that our mayor is really supportive.
Oh, your mayor is the best, best mayor. I call him the doing, doing mayor.
Yeah, I definitely have to talk about this because right after I got elected, since, since I was pregnant during my election, my campaign. So I delivered right after the inauguration.
Wow.
My, my baby was born.
That child is going to be a politician. You played politics when the child was in process.
Both were with me on council actually. Yeah, since, well, since I, my, my little daughter was born on Boxing Day.
Oh, wow. 26th December.
Yes, yes, yes. But our inauguration was started at December, early December. So just short, two weeks after, I got delivered at Markham Soviet Hospital. And then, because I was new and my assistant was new too. I, right after I got discharged from the hospital, I went back to work the next day.
Oh my God.
And since then, I never got a day off my leave. No.
That can only a Chinese lady can do.
No, 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 no.
I would say this is what is called woman empowerment.
Woman empowerment and the.
I still couldn't believe.
Devotion and dedication.
No, not, not anymore, not anymore. One time is still now.
Amazing though, very inspiring.
Yeah, but, but back to the mayor's point of, the part of mayor.
Go ahead.
He actually talked to me and said, well, Isa, don't feel bad if you think you need time to, for, for your kids, for your newborn baby. Don't feel stressed that you're not able to go to each committee.
Reasonable guy.
Very reasonable, very, very, very reasonable. And actually, he is so, so supportive. So that, that's why, well, I, I also as a newly rookie councillor, I really wish to learn a lot more, right? And to get in, get involved in each and every committee. And that, he was the only one who said, oh, just take your time, don't need to, just.
He's a fatherly figure.
Exactly.
To all.
Yeah, don't exhaust yourself. Yeah, you can always pick it up later, slowly, slowly, gradually after. So yeah, I really thank the mayor for giving me all kinds of support and all kinds of encouragement during the entire course. And right now, he, he, you talked to me, he said, oh, you're not rookie anymore. Yeah, you remember?
Definitely. Now no mistakes allowed.
I was like, oh, now, now the pressure, I can feel the pressure now.
No, no, I got the news. Now this second term, she's going to do very well. That is what your colleagues are saying. And now Isa is a seasoned councillor and she will do much, much better. And she will implement lots of projects, lots of things during a second term. And she's here to stay. I said, just keep her in the Markham council only, don't allow her to push her to the province and federal level so soon.
Well, yeah, I'm very good, very good with my area right now. So yeah, I'm so comfortable and I'm so eager to learn a lot more about Markham. Yeah.
Now that's very interesting that all the, like shares that you have, like the share that you're doing with the viewers, interesting Isa, right? Your journey, your life, the way you started, wow. Yeah.
We'll be taking a short break and we'll be with you soon. Welcome back after a short break in a weekly talk show, Voice of Canada, hosted by Aswandi Arvadiwala. Our today's co-host Kamni Singh and our wonderful guest is councillor Lisa Lee. Isa Lee, I'm sorry, my apologies, Isa Lee, Isa Lee. She belongs to Ward 8, City of Markham, and she has been recently been re-elected. So as we first forgot to congratulate her in the beginning, so I would take the opportunity of wishing her all the best for a second term and many more terms to come.
Thank you so much for your warm wishes. Yes.
Isa, tell us about, more about the three main agenda. I was very impressed by the agenda you gave in your election manifesto. Yeah, you said making housing affordable and all that stuff. There were three of them. So I'm really very interested, community safety.
Yes.
And the third was family making housing more affordable and, and the, and, and the last was, what was the last agenda? There were three.
Actually, I have more than three, but the top.
But they were top three.
Okay, the top three.
So but take one by one because they are very interesting in the interest of the people.
Sure, sure. Well, we can start from.
Housing.
Housing, yes, yes. Housing is definitely a very hot topic.
It's a scary, Markham, we can't afford to buy a house in Markham.
Yeah, no. Well, yeah, in a way, yeah, Markham, it's a really good city for people. A lot of people would like to come and actually I know myself, a lot of residents, because my ward is actually South Markham, just across Steels, right? So I knew a lot of my residents actually came from the other side of the city, like just, like from Toronto.
Toronto, Richmond Hill also, same region, no?
Uh, no, no, Toronto, like, like basically we, we are just divided by Steels.
Steels.
Steels Avenue, South of Steels is called Scarborough and North of Steels is Markham, right? So my ward, basically it's the South Markham part, that basically all above Steel, North of Steel, all the way to 407. And then from Macau went all the way to 404, that's kind of the boundary. Also some on the Leech Robb area, which is the south part of, a little bit on Highway 7. So, well, I, well, I understand, well, there's like a, we, we have already declared that there is a housing crisis in, in Markham. So.
No, they are very costly.
Yes.
I always ask, okay, what is the reason it's all the Hong Kong economy is being, is showing? Lots of rich billionaires from Hong Kong are in, are in Markham.
Well, probably from all around the world, not just from Hong Kong.
No, no, Hong Kong has brought prosperity to Markham. I always say, and then a rich Chinese businessman too.
Oh, yes, yes. And also the businesses and expertise bring to Markham. That's why we have been striving for a lot of like good initiatives such as the innovation hub that the City of Markham has been like actually championing and pioneering. Would like to establish something like, like an innovation and business park that, that was actually up north, also within Markham area. But well, back to the question of housing.
Affordable.
Yes.
Menchies, people are really interested to know how you're going to make it affordable.
Yes, yes. From, from, in my area, basically South Markham is called, well, where, where the, the average household is the lowest among the, the market, entire market. So, yeah, so even, even the United Way has a report particularly targeting on South Markham in, in my area.
Ward 8.
Yes, Ward 8 was seven.
Seven also.
Yes, South Markham. So basically we have been identified, there, there is an issue. And we have been as part of the stakeholders, the community partners, we have been trying to, well, of course, affordable housing, it's a provincial issue, right? And also regional issue. But on the city side, we can actually.
City plays a role, giving permits and this and that and expedite.
Yeah, yes, expedite and actually reducing a lot more like the red tapes.
Yeah.
And well, in, in the past, in, in council meeting, what we have done is when York Region came and to discuss and to propose a site for affordable housing, well, myself definitely voted yes, to, at least to speed up the process, to show the region, show the province, we are in support of having affordable housing. So hopefully it will speed up the entire process to get more, more units. And actually in my area, there are already two, two, three buildings of affordable housing units.
Building means apartments or condos?
Apartments.
Apartments, very good.
Yes, that, that actually it's run by the York Region.
Wow, wow.
Affordable housing.
Oh, lovely, lovely.
We call community housing. Yeah, there, there's one called at the Hegeman Corners Community Housing and right next.
Very good info to us because we thought that there is no community housing in Markham. They are all dirt rich.
No, no, there is.
What would be the eligibility to kind of get a unit there?
Oh, basically it's, because it's run by the region, everyone who is interested, you can submit, you can go.
But should be low income group?
Yes, of course. That is the low income.
That's a criteria, because if you cross the certain income annually, then they say you don't belong to this category.
Yes, yes. And also the next one is the Tony Wong Place, also by 14 and Kennedy. There's another 200 unit affordable housing.
Lovely, lovely.
Yeah, but that, that's for a low income, but for, for, for the entire like a Markham group, I mean the citizens. Basically, the city has been doing a lot of, like the, I, I'm not sure if you have heard of the Housing Summit, which was done by the City of Markham back in 2019. We have actually been gathering stakeholders, like the developers, different levels of government, to sit in same round table, talk about like how to reduce red tapes, how we can increase more housing.
Quality of Markham.
Yes, yes. Well, our mayor has been like doing a lot.
And I've seen even during COVID, you all like seal everyone.
Yes, yes. So we, we, we're still doing a lot of things like in terms of like making housing more affordable. So that, that's really something that I really love about Markham. It's very inclusive, diverse. And actually the mayor himself, it's really embracing each ethnicity. So this is the most important thing.
Yeah, he sings in Mandarin.
Exactly, in Cantonese too. Yeah, yeah. That makes everyone of us feel really welcoming, so welcome. Yeah.
Your mother tongue is Cantonese?
Yes, Cantonese.
Because Hong Kong people speak Cantonese, Chinese people speak Mandarin.
I, I do learn Cantonese, Mandarin back in school.
So you can understand and talk, communicate?
Mandarin, yeah, yeah, both.
Lovely, lovely, lovely.
We got it, we're gonna learn it at school.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the next question is very much related to what we spoke just now.
Yeah.
So as we know, Canada is the biggest country in the world with 192 nationalities based here and everyone is quite happy living in Canada. We are talking about the great city of Markham, which is considered as a rich city, but very strong infrastructure, as you were talking, you were mentioning about it, right? And that again, due to hard work of City of Markham and Mayor Frank Scapiti. So maybe if you can share about the demographic of diversity in your ward, like Ward 8, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. Basically, my ward has almost 60% of Chinese population.
Lovely.
Um, yeah, and actually, yeah, some of them are Cantonese, some of them are Mandarin. And the rest of them, a large part, like 30-ish percent were South Asians.
South Asians are there.
Yeah, so basically.
Sri Lankans are there?
Sri Lankans included too.
Included too.
Yeah, yeah. So and, and the rest, basically we, we got, oh, my ward actually is really diverse. I got black community, I got a Filipino community and others, East Asians community.
Chinese and everybody.
Japanese.
Singaporeans are there?
Yes, yes, some, yes, some.
And Japanese, the more sought after people.
Well, very interestingly, I, I gotta, I gotta mention it, in my area, besides the Chinese malls, I also got a Japanese town, a J-town in, in my area.
Really?
Yes, yes.
We never knew that there's a J-town also.
J-town, oh.
Because they are very small in number. Japanese don't migrate anywhere. They are so proud of Japan.
Well, yeah, but, but they still have like a J-town with a lot of like supermarkets, like, yeah, grocery stores and even food stores. Yeah, we, I always eat there. Yeah.
Yeah, Japanese food is very healthy.
Yeah, sushi and yeah, sashimi and yeah, ramens and yeah.
Yeah, but this, this is an information for everyone. I don't think people know.
And then there comes the Koreans.
Yes.
The South Koreans, they are doing also very well.
Of course. And, and we do have a lot of restaurants that are operated by South Koreans.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in Japanese, Korean food, yeah, that's another like, yeah, population. And not to mention like South Asian food, like yeah, South Asian community, which is really big. In my area, there's all, well, there's another Bombay Bazaar. Yeah, I should advertise, right?
That's a Southeast Asian.
Yes, yes.
Bombay Bazaar too.
Yes, yes. So it's really the first ward in my area. Yeah.
Because we see usually the shop signs and even the bank signs in the main Mandarin.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, and that's why, that is very confusing for, for Canadians, how to read, what is it? We only recognise the logo.
Oh, yes.
That this is a TD Bank logo or this is RBC logo, otherwise it's mentioned in Chinese.
Oh, no, no. Oh, actually the Bank of China, they have, they, they have a logo. Yeah, they also in English.
So we have to remember logo now.
Yes, yes.
A landmark and everything, how to recognise.
Exactly, exactly. I know.
It's so interesting to know. So we never knew about the Bombay Bazaar, we didn't know about the JD.
Yes, yes, come visit us, yeah.
Councillor Isa Lee, as you are aware, we have just come out of long conduct COVID-19 pandemic. For two years, people all over the world had not expected that there will be lockdowns, shutdowns, so many loss of life.
Yes.
So many businesses will be shut down. People will be losing many things in every respect. But your city did very well because I used to follow each and every city's councillors, what they are doing. And I have seen the councillors of Markham delivering food, helping people, guiding them. And for general information about COVID and other things, we used to get information first from Markham. Believe me, I'm proud of it. It's not that I'm a very pro Markham, I'm though pro Markham, but they were ahead of everyone.
Yeah, I'm glad. Yeah, we have been doing so hard, like through COVID, I know it's been very difficult to reach out to people. People are so reluctant to even open their doors to talk to everyone, each and everyone. So what I've done basically in the past three years, even, even now, I did delivery of PPEs and also rapid task kits to my own residents since COVID, because there, I, I, I used to organise like community barbecues, right? But, but due to COVID, nothing can be helped. So the way that I thought I should better reach out to residents and I would like to check with them if, if things are going well with them. So I was thinking, well, maybe I can, well, just gather more resources from the donors to get a lot more PPEs to just to supply to the those that need. A lot of residents, especially seniors, they, not just they are afraid of coming out and they actually have no access to PPEs while many of them are living alone. So yeah, I, I just organised like a community giveaway project. I just gathered one, 1,500 care packages.
Lovely.
To deliver to my own residents.
Beautiful, beautiful. That means you had the resources to collect the 1,500 packages.
Yeah, yeah.
Now Isa, my part two of the same question is, after the pandemic, we are seeing huge inflation. Bank rates have increased, inflation have increased. We have got shortage of manpower, the people who really work. There are nowhere to be seen in major, many industries, shops, jobs are ample, but there are no people to work with. Shortage of drugs, even the children are suffering from shortage of drugs. So these are the factors, how to overcome? Because just increasing the rates every, every month twice is not going to solve completely. Something has to be done, not by the city, but by the province and the federal government in this respect.
Yes, exactly. I totally feel what you're talking about. And in terms of city-wise, I, well, I, I should have mentioned this. Last year, because there was actually a quite a big need for food, food insecurity was quite a bit of a issue.
That time.
Yes, yes. So I basically organised another community event, a food drive. And to also do, do, despite the same theory, I gather like, I do do fundraising and also did food drives. I encourage even senior homes, they can just contribute if they have the resources, just contribute the food, contribute the money. And I'll just send back to the three food banks in, in Markham.
You have got three food banks.
Yeah, Yorkshire Food Bank, Markham Food Bank and also my local food bank, the 105 Gibson Food Bank, which is in my ward. So basically we have raised over. So basically, we have raised uh over a hundred thousand dollars uh for yeah monetary, like for.
Purchase power and giving power is any day more of Markham compared to Mississauga and Brampton. Your region is uh rich.
Well, yeah, it's it's all about like a community um well, support, community building. So yeah, I from for throughout those events, I really feel that um the community actually, it's really willing to step up and to support each other. So I I really feel the warmth, that people were actually gathering PPEs, gathering money and going back and forth just to deliver the food baskets to those in need. It's yeah, it's it's really heartwarming for me to see all those, that's why these are the motivations, yeah, for me to just continue doing it.
Keep it up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be taking a short break and we'll be with you soon. Welcome back after a short break.
Okay, so yeah, we all, we are talking about all the social word that you are already getting, like you are involved and you have been doing it. In two thousand fourteen, you said that you started your, basically, you started for, you did contest for the first time. And then uh since then, like now, you have been elected the second time, two thousand eighteen was the first time for you. Now, what would be your future plan? Like, what is your future plan? Maybe you want to share with the viewer if how you want to climb up the ladder and serve on provincial and federal level, like you know, your plan?
See, we are asking you to climb the ladder and just now, little while ago, I was asking you to hold on.
No, but the thing is, because you have the way you're journeying, you have the spark.
You have the spark.
And we want to hear from you.
We want to hear, can you be our provincial MPP or a federal, federal MP? That will be a big honor for us, then we are going to bother you more and more.
Yeah, your journey is so motivational, like you are a fan already, yeah.
Yeah, I, well, right now, I'm just taking, paying my attention to my own plate and I I feel, I feel comfortable serving my own residents right now. And especially, well, uh quite quite a few uh others have have been asking you whether you would like to step up or do uh go going for, well, maybe running for another level of politics.
Exactly.
At this point, I would say, well, since actually my my family is still young, my my girls, one is seven and one is four.
School year, school going.
Yeah, school year. I would rather, um I I really feel regretted for not spending enough time with with them.
But still, if you jump to province, you're going to be in Toronto only. But the only if you jump to federal level, then for a whole week, you have to be to Ottawa.
Yeah.
And that has really disturbed lots of families with young kids. Because I know of some MPs, they had a very rough time, because the families were well settled in Toronto.
Yes.
And they and they were for a whole week, they were there. And then they used to come to, back to the base, they were busy with the events.
Yes.
Meeting people. And again, Monday morning, breakfast and fly to Ottawa.
Exactly, it's non-stop, it's non-stop.
So it's not easy.
Not easy.
Federally, you should have grown-up children and and a very supporting spouse. You can act as a mother and a father to your children. Or pack them up to Ottawa.
Well, yeah, well, or or maybe I'll just send my husband to to run for politics, maybe he has the interest too.
But now, with your charm, I think you you won't be able to succeed you.
We're working on different areas.
Because you are, you are become a a public figure. People know you. You know, I saw his picture only two, three days ago for one of the events, he participated with you.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I never had not seen your husband ever prior to that, so.
He was the man behind the scenes.
To bring you, but he has to come out well, now public knows you, everybody knows you. You're not only well-known in Markham, but all over GTA.
Hurry your advice, I'm gonna bring him out more often.
Please bring him, do some, do some events, because the Markham councillors, they do event, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Amanda has come twice to my events, yes? She has come when she returned from London, she's a Commonwealth winner. So when I threw a reception for her in her honor on, when we returned from England.
Okay.
So Amanda was there to greet us. And she attended the reception, the brunch and all.
Okay, I, yeah, definitely, you 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 definitely have to invite me again next time.
Yes, Isa, now this after question, you are on my list, definitely, when they are there, you will be there too.
Oh, my great honor.
Yeah, for your journey, I mean, it's inspiring all of that. Okay, so I think it was you to ask.
Go ahead, that is, that is.
Okay, that, so yeah, so talking about now, because we were talking about your husband. So maybe the viewers want to know more about your family and the way you balance between, you know, professional and personal life, you spoke about them, but talk about.
Length about.
If you, yeah, the more people know about them, right? It's nice.
Well, yeah, my family, I I have a loving husband and my two lovely girls, one is um.
Born in Canada?
Born in Canada, grade two, one is grade two, um just turned seven.
Oh, my God, they must be so cute.
Yeah, in a way, yeah, yeah, but yeah, and also, um the little one is just turning four at unboxing day. So yes, yes, the little one. So basically, um she is on JK on um yeah, on uh Monza Sorry. So um it's really challenging, I I should say.
Definitely challenging for both of you to manage the young, that young kids.
Yes, without the help of my 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 mom, my parents, and also in-laws, I won't, I won't be surviving. Yeah, yeah, because the 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 age, that age for the kids, they actually, it's really demanding.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they always want to, yes, stand with her, yeah, be with her.
Somebody to guide them, look after them, otherwise, they are mischievous at this age.
Yes, and you're asking me about balancing work and life, yeah.
Professional and personal.
I have been struggling, honestly, yes, it's it's because, as you know, I I I can share with you my schedule. The first three days usually of the week, it's usually a whole day meetings, if not half. Well, because we do, council meetings, a committee meetings, takes up all full day and then plus staff meetings. And the rest of the two days of the week, it, well, we I I'll just go to the residents to to meet with them.
Students.
Yes, constituents to uh to look at, look after their issues, some sometimes I have to go to their their homes and visit them. And also for other community engagements, um if I am organizing like community events, uh attending other social events, that that also take up my whole weekends. So it's really, really like a really demanding schedule. So what what I have been doing was, um I know I got very, very little time to be with my kids. I usually just brought the whole family out for a lot of social events, if possible, if possible. For a lot of city events, like the tree planting and some some other outdoor events, I would definitely bring my whole family.
Definitely, that's very good.
Yeah.
So how how do your kids, the kids feel like about you, like they're proud?
They enjoy, they enjoy the events.
They still they much.
Mama is playing a role, huh?
Yeah, 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 they they already see, oh, yes, my mom is councillor easily.
So sweet, they must be feeling so proud. Even in school, they do publicity.
Well, I I I don't know about that, but they 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 probably, they are just like, well, as long as mommy is with me, um they they were okay. So yeah, they they're just in that age.
Comfortable in there, in the.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Let's move forward, because the time is running out, I want to complete the whole thing. So councillor Isa Lee, uh as you are aware, that since long, the York University campus, which is the most prestigious project for Markham, how how much work is left and when it will be operational? Because I have asked everyone this question.
Oh, basically, it's almost done. And uh we have just a a few months ago, we were actually at the uh the groundbreaking, not the groundbreaking, it's oh, it's actually like a finishing ceremony.
Structure, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes. And also, we already revealed the the street, the University Avenue, the streets already, like a few months back.
That will be a big boost.
Yes, yes.
For the students for up to Oshawa and Witby and beyond.
Exactly, exactly.
Collingwood and all people can come to Markham.
Yeah, and actually, they are, they are able to receive like uh receptive applications uh starting this year, actually, they already started. And as soon as next year, two thousand and twenty-three, they that there are three programs are gonna be running in in Markham. But for the entire campus, Markham campus will be opened by spring twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, oh, wow, wow.
It's not far, it's not far.
It's not far off.
Yeah.
And it is going to be a milestone.
Yes, yes, and and the programs are actually running.
Had a York University, reputable year, because my daughter studied for one year in York before she went to Quebec.
Okay, okay, yes, it's it's a good news, definitely for for Markham. And before that, I I still remember uh before I got elected, I was also part of the group who, that the grassroots, the the citizen group to um uh to encourage and to support the the building of the York University. So everyone in my area is so proud after we heard that, we got the fun thing, we got everything, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a lot of time. So quickly, Isa, we would like to share with the viewer the infrastructure of city of Markham, regional councillor, councillors.
Regional councillors, how many, just in quick, a short answer, really, how many regional councillors are there? How many councillors are there? How many wards are there? And how many school board trustees are there?
Yeah, okay, so basically, they have uh thirteen of us in on Markham council. We got the mayor, mayor was also from regional council, he he also wears wears different hats. And we we got five, including the mayor, regional councillors, and also.
And ward are, ward eight wards.
Eight wards, yeah, and I'm from Ward Eight, so yeah, eight wards, so it comes with to um.
And lucky, eight is lucky in Chinese.
Yes, in Chinese, yes.
My daughter is born on eight.
You know, and always, number eight is considered lucky, so see, you got Ward Eight.
Yes, yes, yeah. So and for trustees, there there is actually four, yeah, we got two, two wards per trustee. Yeah, it makes up with in Markham part. So yeah, basically, about thirteen of us on Markham council.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, councillor Isa Lee, I would not like to repeat again, again, I've got very good relations with Markham, your mayor, your other council members. So I would like to ask you to give us a concluding remarks for our viewers, for us. Or any advice, what should do, or any in young people who are interested to enter politics in service of Canada, what they should do.
Well, I think first thing, for the first thing is to get yourself, be familiar with what's happening in the city. And the first step, definitely go out to do volunteer, go for community services, no matter, it's just like a tree planting or just a well, picking up garbage whatsoever, just go out in the community, just get to know more. You can also browse or the website of the city, just to get to know what department responsible for what type of like responsibility. So basically, it's all about it, the more that you know, the more you will be more engaged it with the community. Then you would, that will be better shape up your your thoughts or and your interest in what you gonna be doing next. So yeah, that's what my my.
Agreed, so that, yeah.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We are truly proud of you.
Yes.
Truly, truly proud of you, me, myself and my co-host also. And our doors of our TV, and GTM, which is a production house, and our show, Voice of Canada, is always open for you. You can just give us a call whenever you feel like coming and announcing anything important, we will welcome you in a very short time. And we, I assure you, we would air your interview in the month of December with a full promotion, which will go from tomorrow on our social media sites, informing our viewers and everybody that you were in our show. And that because we take some promo pictures after the interview is over.
Right.
So with that note, soon we'll be signing off from our today's episode, we had lots of things to talk about. But hopefully, we hope that next year again in twenty twenty-three, you'll be coming back, we'll invite you as part two, uh Isa Lee.
Wow.
Councillor from Markham, by that time, you will be doing a lot of things. Because you are just, a second term is started.
Yes.
Last month, you got re-elected, so you will be able to speak a lot about what is happening.
Yeah, look forward to it.
And development is going on, what is doing and what are the good things happening in Markham particularly? And we are always looking at Markham.
Yeah.
As a bright city and our leader in GTA.
Thank you for the kind words, thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
So carry, carry our greetings to the his worship, the regional councillors, councillors for yourself, for your family.
Thank you, Willdo.
So with that note, we'll be taking, signing off from our program, Voice of Canada. We'll be back next week with a brand new uh guest within our episode with myself and my co-host Kamni Singh. We are signing off, God bless Canada, adios, goodbye.
Goodbye.